Hi Tamara, we have quorum and we've reached four o'clock if you're all ready.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the third is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have any comments on the previous meeting notes? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve? Peter, second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Minutes are approved. We don't show that we have any old business. So we'll go straight to new business. Our first item is a standard rezoning, Seventh Avenue.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to see everyone. We do have a standard rezoning here off of Seventh Avenue. One second. We were sharing screen, should be good. Yeah. And then just click on the slide. There we go. It does include a number of pins shown there. It's actually an entire block between Track Street and Seventh Avenue, Maple Street and Locust Street. Proposed to be rezoned from C2 to CMU, totals about a third, three quarters of an acre and it is listed as downtown in the city's comprehensive plan. I'm not kidding. Come here again and see. No. No. We have to just do next slide. Can you go to the back one, sorry? Actually. No, we're good right here. So taking a look around the block, this upper left photo is from the corner of Maple and Track Street with Seventh Avenue kind of back to your left. Those are the buildings that are fronting on Maple and you can see a vacant lot there at the corner that's been undeveloped. In the middle upper row is a closer look along that frontage on Maple. On the far right, you see the frontage on Seventh, which is kind of hemmed in by the construction taking place there. But it's this row of buildings that front on Seventh Avenue and then there's two vacant lots that are at the corner of Locust and Seventh. This is from the back looking towards Seventh Avenue on the bottom left where there is, there was a building there that had to be brought down at the corner and then that caused some deterioration to the next building over. So two buildings have been removed and you can see some site work taking place there that's being done to help stabilize what's going to be a new wall. Applicants here can talk more about that. But all this is what's in Zone C2 and then it includes the small retail shop there at the corner of Track and Locust. This shot is looking at Locust Street and Seventh Avenue is off to the background there. So that's around the block. Next slide. So taking a look at the first criteria that we consider, which is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. We take a look at the future land use map. The brand new Gen H comprehensive plan designates these properties as downtown. The surrounding properties, including the frontage along Seventh and nearby blocks along Locust are also designated as downtown. And just so everyone's on the same page of what that character area means, the description is as follows. "This is the heart of the community and center of civic activities. In addition to governmental uses, it includes a mix of retail, restaurant, service, office, civic uses, variety of residential housing types, complement the non-residential uses and ensure a vibrant center with a 24/7 population. The mix of uses can be horizontal or vertical with changes between floors of the same building. Buildings of two or more stories are common and streets feature short block lengths and pedestrian facilities. Open spaces include plazas and formal greens." Next slide please. Continuing this, basically what I just read to you essentially describes what CMU zoning district achieves. And so staff is, does find that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the character area description that I just read. Furthermore, the rezoning to CMU is consistent with the zoning crosswalk, which is a tool that takes a look at the character area descriptions and determines whether they align with our various zoning districts. And the existing pattern of buildings are consistent with the renderings and elements found in the Seventh Avenue focus area, which is in Chapter Five of the comprehensive plan. Taking a look at compatibility, next slide. Start by reviewing the current and current land use and zoning map. The subject property is made up of nine lots with six buildings, two vacant lots, a parking lot and a right-of-way. This block of properties are the only properties zoned C2 east of, excuse me, along Seventh Avenue west of the railroad tracks. Sorry. Yes. The remainder of the area along Seventh Avenue west of the railroad tracks is zoned CMU. North of the subject property along Locust Street, Maple Street and the railroad tracks, property is zoned industrial. East of the railroad tracks, the properties along Seventh Avenue are zoned C2. The subject properties and other properties in close proximity are located in the Seventh Avenue Depot National Historic District. Land uses in this area are typical of a downtown with retail and restaurants being the primary uses. The built environment is typical of a downtown urban environment with a mix of one-story and two-story buildings right directly up to the back of the sidewalk and where highly transparent storefronts and primary business entrances are the norm. I believe I misspoke. It's the only block west of the railroad tracks that is zoned C2. Next slide. As mentioned, the subject property is a complete micro block containing six buildings with sheer common walls, reflecting a truly traditional urban form. The existing land uses in this area align with the mixed-use character of the CMU zoning district. The zoning districts in this area vary and as I mentioned, to the west and south in the core of the Seventh Avenue National Register Historic District, the zoning is CMU. Catty corner to the east, the zoning transitions to C2. And my understanding is that this was the zoning district that surrounded the C1, which is our downtown zoning, prior to the creation of CMU. And the C2 zoning continues along Seventh Avenue towards Mud Creek and Oklaho Greenway. North of the subject property along the road tracks, the zoning is I1. To continue the evaluation of compatibility, our second criteria, staff reviewed the goals and guiding principles of the Gen H comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning of CMU is consistent with those relevant goals and guiding principles as indicated on the screen. Next slide. And because this property is located within the downtown area, character area, it was included in the downtown master plan, which is Chapter Five of the comp plan. And so we utilized the design guidelines from that chapter to further evaluate compatibility. And we found that the CMU zoning district and the existing structures on the subject property are consistent with those design guidelines. Next slide. For criteria three, changed conditions. Staff finds that the changed conditions related to the construction of the improved streetscapes along Seventh Avenue and the demolition of a building near the corner of Locust and Seventh. The current C2 zoning would not permit by right development that would conform to the existing character of the Seventh Avenue Depot National Register Historic District. So that's really kind of the crux of the rezoning is that for infill redevelopment, that it could be done in a manner that's compatible with those existing buildings, that historic look. And that cannot occur under the C2. For the fourth criteria, public interest, staff finds that the proposal provides an opportunity for compatible infill development and additional economic development, which complements the city's investment in improved streetscaping along Seventh Avenue. Next slide. The fifth criteria is public facilities. The subject property is currently served by existing city services and infrastructure. Staff would highlight the location along the city's existing interconnected street grid and newly enhanced pedestrian facilities and its location to nearby off-street trails. These attributes combine to create opportunities to disperse automobile traffic and reduce vehicular trips. For the sixth criteria, there are no existing trees nor environmentally sensitive areas within the area proposed for rezoning. And so with that, staff has put together our comprehensive plan consistency statement on the next slide, which states the proposed zoning of CMU aligns with the Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation map and the character area description for downtown. Next slide. We have put together three points of rationale for your consideration for approval. You are encouraged to select a rationale that aligns with your opinion and edit, add or delete from the list as you make a motion. And we also have one rationale for denial for your consideration as well. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Does anyone have questions for Matt?
Yes, I have a question, Madam Chairman. There are currently six buildings on being, on this property or on this proposal. Is, several of them do not appear to be in the historic district proper. Would they still be considered part of the historic district and preserved as part of it?
So I think there's only one, the one at the corner, the mercantile business, retail business at the corner of Track Street and Locust.
I'm thinking of the ones on Maple. There's, there's a distillery, there's a...
So the hatched area, oh, you maybe?
Yeah.
The hatched area, it, it, the hatch, the outline of the hatched area is underneath the red. And so you can't see the outline, but you can see that hatched infill.
Yes.
That is all, that includes the National Register District there.
Okay, so that would include the six buildings that already exist on there?
Yes, except for 730 Locust is not in there.
Okay.
But just real quick, the National Register District does not provide any specific standards. There are no restrictions or regulations associated with the National Register District. Only local historic districts have those standards where you have to get approval if you're going to change anything on the exterior of the building. But this is, it's really just for recognition. It doesn't have any regulatory teeth to it.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, staff.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay. So do we have any comment by the submitter? I guess it's Zachary Grogan?
No, this one is not. This is Sharif.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong.
It's Arcturus.
Hello.
How are you? Lyle Sharif, 350 Roberts Drive in Laurel Park. Pleasure meeting you. Just want to introduce myself. I am the gentleman who has focused on Seventh Avenue and the revitalization of Seventh Avenue. I have recently completed some restoration on Seventh Avenue. I am the owner of the building where Claywood is. I restored that building. The art gallery across the street, we delicately, delicately, can't get that out, have taken consideration to the design of that building and restored that. We also are the owners of the building where the distillery is and Lana's Noodles.
And his noodles.
Yeah. Just, just to let you know that we, we have gone over and above what most people have thought we would do in this neighborhood and we, we take consideration into the historic, even though we're not required to, architectural elements in the neighborhood. And we plan on doing lots of other great things in this neighborhood. We're very, very, very committed. And you'll probably see and hear more about things that we're doing. And I hope that when you see our name or my name or myself come in front of you, you know who I am, what my intentions are, what we're about and that you would take anything we're doing into consideration as far as us being sensitive to doing the correct thing.
Thank you. We have seen your work and you've done a great job out there.
Thank you.
Okay, so comments from the public? We opened a public hearing, yes. And Lynn, did you?
Good evening or afternoon, Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. So my concerns are about gentrification. I don't necessarily know how changing the zoning would create that more easily, but that's just a consideration I feel that's really important in this area. I appreciate that an investor has come in and is fixing up Seventh Avenue, but I still see it as a gentrifying factor so far in the way that it's showing up. So I am concerned. Yeah, and so when we look at the list of all those things, I just don't really see protection of the historic community that has been there and built that area. And so I just, you know, it's just a comment on the process here of moving forward as we convert zonings, you know, just displacement and gentrification on Seventh Avenue is very real and it's happening. And all of us white people in this room are playing a role in that. So how do we do this strategically to preserve the history and give opportunity to the historic communities that have been there? Instead of shutting out that opportunity, we did see a condo being proposed on this street a few months back, you know, and yeah, my concern is just that what's going to be built here isn't going to be accessible to lower income and historically, historic minorities in this community. So, yeah, I don't know what else to say to that because I don't think, you know, that we're going to solve any problems. But, yeah, I think this is, there's not preventative measure right here, so I'm just very concerned. Thank you.
Okay, then is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Do we have anybody online?
No, Madam Chair, we don't have anyone online at the moment.
Okay, so we can close the public hearing and then open for board discussion?
It's thrilled. It's something moving forward. It's been a long time coming. Seventh Avenue deserves it. I'm sure there's some historic value that can be maintained in the process.
Well, I think too that the Preservation Board would still be reviewing any development that would come to this parcel.
Sorry.
I mean, I'm not sure there's much else to be said. It seems like track of...
Okay. So then do we have a motion?
But I have a clarification on the Preservation Committee. What is Mr. Sheriff's responsibility to that as well as that responsibility to what he wants to develop?
Do you want to explain that?
Sort of preservation.
Yep, Sam, you may want to jump in here. Currently, I'll just speak to what the current situation is and then you can add. Because it's not in a local historic district, they are not subject to having to get a certificate of appropriateness for exterior work on existing buildings or new construction on the other buildings. I didn't, I failed to mention this earlier, but it, not only is National Register District something for recognition, it also opens up opportunities for tax credits and grants. If you're, if you're doing a project within those districts, it opens up funding opportunities. So I would highlight that to the applicant. And then in terms of future efforts along that, I don't know how much the HPC has been talking about that area, if you have something to add.
Yes, so the HPC has, I believe before I got to the city, has talked to some of the property owners to see about creating a local district. I don't think that got very far, but it's still something I think that the HPC would...
It doesn't review it right now.
So the HPC, yeah, so no, no review by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
I move Planning Board recommends City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property. Pin, should I read all these pins? From C2 secondary business to CMU, central mixed use based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville's Gen H comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis. And because the proposed zoning of central mixed use aligns with the Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation map and the character area description for downtown. Two, furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing and because, one, CMU zoning would be extended to align with adjacent zoning. Two, the permitted uses and development standards of the CMU zoning aligns with the existing character of the subject properties. Three, CMU standard... Three, CMU standards will allow for new infill development design to complement surrounding Seventh Ave area in a way that C two zoning will not.
All right. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes. Thank you. Good to meet you.
You'll notice I did not read those PINs.
Man. Didn't know what I was getting into there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Item B, text amendment.
Yes, so this text amendment is initiated by staff. Next slide. It relates to, primarily relates to updating our zoning code to reflect and align the new comprehensive plan. There were references that were tied to the twenty thirty or the two thousand nine comprehensive plan that were now out of date after August first because the new comprehensive plan was adopted. And so we're primarily updating that, but there's some other tweaks and I'll, I'll go over those. But we're, we're focused on the urban residential and the urban village zoning districts. Next slide. So this is the language, the proposed changes reflect, as I mentioned, updating the future land use designations that are found under the procedures section for both urban village and urban residential to align with the Gen H character areas and the focused intensity nodes. Additionally, you'll notice that the bottom right corner, changing the distance requirement for what is going to be MGL, multi-generational living, is proposed to be increased to three hundred and fifty feet from a hundred feet. We weren't, you know, exactly sure where a hundred feet came from, but three hundred and fifty feet is a, is a typical downtown block or the length of our downtown blocks. So by using this figure, we're saying if it's within a block, a typical block of non-residential zoning district, then that would allow urban village to locate in an area designated as multi-generational living. The rest of the character areas would not have that distance requirement. Another slightly different factor, which I'll, I'll display a little bit later is that we're including the focused intensity nodes and I'll illustrate that. Next slide. So that was for urban village. This is for urban residential. The top paragraph is the same. We're just aligning it with the, the now current future land use designations. What's different about this one is that we are also adding some uses. So urban residential, which is a zoning district, we have started to suggest more to developers because it has a lot of really good design standards that we think result in higher quality development, better connectivity. So, so better outcomes for our transportation network in particular and a good opportunity for infill development. It allows multifamily residential dwellings, but it was silent on single family and two family. So typically zoning districts, as they increase in intensity, all of the less intense uses that are found in other zoning districts kind of get wrapped into the more intense zoning districts. Kind of like a Russian doll, if you will. So that was not the case here. We believe that's by design. But we also recognize that multi-generational living in particular and a number of the guiding principles of the new comprehensive plan talk about a, a range of housing types being available. And so we envision and have seen development, potential developments that want to provide that mix of housing types. And urban residential would be a good zoning district that would fit for those. However, they would run up against this issue where single families, so any kind of detached units would not be permissible. So, so we're proposing to add single family and two family with caveat that, so it would be subject to the standards in section five twenty-five six. Under five twenty-five six, it's new section we're proposing. Single family detached dwellings shall comprise no more than fifty percent of the total units of any development. So this would not allow for a developer to develop a single family subdivision, a typical single family subdivision, a conventional single family subdivision in this zoning district. At least fifty percent of the units would have to have, be of some other more dense housing type. So that could be single family attached, it could be multifamily, it could be small scale multifamily. So that is, that is to help continue and support the original intent of this zoning district was, which was for it to be a very dense residential zoning district. And so this just incorporates a mix of housing types. And then we also clarified that single family attached dwellings would be permitted. So we're distinguishing between detached and attached single family and trying to add clarity there. So that, that is, urban village already allows single family, so we didn't have to make any changes there. To illustrate the relationship between the previous plan and those future land use designations that allowed urban village and urban residential and the new, you can kind of see how these districts relate to one another. But if you go to the next slide, you can actually see a side by side visual comparison. I did not have the ability to take out the other districts on the old map. But if you can envision the orange, the brown, dark brown, the pink, red and purple areas, which is going to not count the blue and the greens and the yellow, all of that area. And I'll say with a caveat that the orange had to be within a hundred feet of, of a non-residential area. All of that area was, was where urban village and urban residential were allowed under the way our code reads today, under the previous comp plan. On the right is our new comprehensive plan where I'm only showing the, 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 the five character area designations that it would be permitted in. And just visually comparing it, it's less area. We're actually reducing the area that would allow for this urban village. And we're concentrating it in the places that we think is appropriate. And so the other difference would be the focused intensity nodes. The language basically says, and actually if you can go back two slides, it says that urban residential, urban village may be considered, may be considered in focused intensity nodes regardless of the underlying character area designation. So if you go up two slides again to the map, under each of those circles on the right are other character area descriptions. So there could be family neighborhood living or open space, open space recreation that's underneath some of those or business, business center. Trying to think of what our other character area names are. Innovation and production, those are some of our more industrial type of character area descriptions. Those may be underlying those focused intensity nodes. The idea is that we do want to concentrate our growth in these kind of key areas so that we're preventing growth from sprawling out of there, right? So we want to call those areas out and say, yes, these are appropriate for infill development. But we're saying may. So it may not make sense in every case. We'll have to reference that underlying character area and see, kind of wrestle with it a little bit and see if it makes sense. But we do want to open up that door within these focused intensity nodes for urban residential zone. So that gives you an idea of the comparison between the, the changes that are being made. There's, next slide, there's one other slight change in the subdivision ordinance. It references specifically the twenty thirty comprehensive plan. So we're just looking to strike that and have it reference the comprehensive plan. It talks about adopted policy guidance. So we're saying most recently adopted policy guidance and removing it from speaking specifically to a specific year. Otherwise, we'd have to change it every time. So eliminating that, that was a one other small change. And so now we can take a look at the next slide for comprehensive plan consistency. We found that the proposal is consistent with the Gen H comprehensive plan area, character area descriptions for multi-generational living, neighborhood center, mixed use employment, mixed use commercial in downtown, as well as the focused intensity nodes. Next slide to highlight this, so the, the least intense character area is the multi-generational living. So if we can find that it aligns with MGL, then that is supportive of the more intense character areas as well. In this case, MGL says this area, this is an excerpt. This area is characterized by mixed residential development and a limited amount of small scale neighborhood serving commercial. It is comprised of a variety of homes mixing detached and attached townhomes and duplexes, units with a lesser amount of multifamily units. The combination of housing types are intended to create intergenerational neighborhoods. That again, essentially describes urban residential as a zoning district. So, so that aligns with that, that character area description aligns with the proposed zoning. For the next slide, for compatibility, staff reviewed the provisions for urban residential and urban village zoning districts as they relate to the goals and guiding principles of the comprehensive plan. We find that the proposed amendment, amendment is compatible, given the provisions for providing a mix of housing types and development standards that promote pedestrian friendly design and compatible site and building design. And furthermore, the, the proposal is consistent with the, I'm sorry, yes, as consistent with the goals and guiding principles of the Gen H plan, which you can see listed out here. We went through the checklist. Checklist was made available in your packet as well. To further highlight that, next slide, pull some excerpts from those guiding principles for compact development, missing middle housing, desirable and affordable housing. I'm not going to read all this, but essentially what this is describing is what urban residential provides, what urban village provides. But urban residential in particular now with the addition of more variety of housing types is going to align further with these guiding principles. And again, since downtown, next slide, downtown was included. We took a look at the design guidelines from chapter five and found that it was consistent with those design guidelines. For next slide, third criteria, the text amendment is being proposed because of the need for updated language due to the adoption of the Gen H comprehensive plan. In terms of public interest, the text amendment maintains and improves the use of urban residential and urban village as a critical zoning tool which advances, advances the goals of the Gen H comprehensive plan. And there were no relevant public facilities or effect on natural environment. And so we have provided this draft comprehensive plan consistency statement for your consideration. And we also provided three rationale for approval, which you can consider and amend as necessary. And then also one rationale for denial. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Moving forward, if the two thousand forty-five plan is necessary, they're doing a good job of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Presentation made sense.
I will second that motion.
Okay, well, we now, oh, go ahead.
Give you all a heads up on this. We did not, we added this late in the game and we missed noticing it. So tonight we are just doing the presentation.
Oh, so we don't vote on it?
And we don't have a public hearing because the public hearing wasn't noticed. So you can continue it. So if you want to formally say, we're going to continue this item to next month's planning board meeting and give that date, which is October tenth.
Okay.
If you can just make that statement, then we can pick up the public hearing. We'll do, we'll do a very short presentation overview next month and we can do the public hearing and the voting then.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue to the October tenth.
To continue this item to next month's meeting on October tenth. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. This is, this third item is a subdivision text amendment for changes to double frontage lots.
Okay. Hello, everyone. This is my first presentation to you all, so I've got my notes. So we have received an application for a subdivision text amendment that would make changes to when double frontage lots can be established when subdividing a lot. Oh, and I see they're getting my, that's okay. Perfect. You can go to the next slide. Actually, back one, sorry. So Zachary Grogan is the applicant for this text amendment. He proposes a waiver for the requirements in section three point zero three D and section three point zero four C of the subdivision ordinance to allow for double frontage lots in more instances. And I'll give more details on what a double frontage lot is in the next slide. The applicant reasoning for this text amendment is to enable more urban site design options while also aligning with NC DOT requirements. Staff believes that this change will allow for increased stability by property owners to create more double frontage lots when subdividing. It will also enable staff to require marginal access streets in certain instances and therefore create double frontage, which we believe will, will assist in managing street access on existing roadways and promote safer, more pedestrian friendly streets. Next slide. A double frontage lot is a lot which fronts upon two parallel streets and/or which fronts upon two streets which do not intersect at the boundaries of the lot. A marginal access street is a street meeting public street standards that provides access solely to lots inaccessible to a budding higher order streets. And so in this image, you can see that strip of lots at the bottom would be considered double frontage because they have two streets. And then the marginal access street would be near the top. And so next slide. Currently, if a property owner wanted to subdivide this lot shown in yellow and create double frontage, they would only be able to do so if the street is classified as an expressway or a boulevard. Staff has proposed ordinance revisions that will create the number, that will increase the number of streets that would trigger a marginal access street, thereby allowing double frontage lots. Next slide. I'm going to briefly go through the code revisions proposed by staff. In section three point oh four, access to lots, we expand the number of streets that allow double frontage lots. For example, throughout this and other sections, we expand the streets, street classifications from expressways and boulevards to include thoroughfares and other designated streets. The most significant change was the addition of other designated streets. We describe other designated streets as pre-existing local streets that are reclassified by using the average annual daily traffic or AADT of a street or a street segment that is in excess of three hundred AADT. If this threshold is passed, then the city manager is able to require a marginal access street and therefore allow for the creation of double frontage lots. We also condensed section three point oh three B and C to avoid redundancy. So number three in this section refers to marginal access streets and was included from section C and section C was done away with. Next slide. We also established a lesser non-access buffer zone requirement for local streets that are designated through this ordinance. We decreased the amount by half from twenty-five feet on expressways, boulevards and thoroughfares to twelve point five feet on other designated local streets. And these images actually aren't in the ordinance. I just included them for your reference. And you can go to the next slide. This section that was added to the pre, yeah, so in section three point oh four, access to lots, the only changes we made were to expand the number of streets to mirror the earlier sections. Next slide. And then finally, in section four point oh three streets, we added a reference to section three point oh four B, which is the section where we give the city manager the ability to reclass streets using AADT. Next slide. And then in four point oh three B, we also expanded the number of streets to mirror earlier revisions. And so those are all of the changes that we made. And on the next slide, I'll briefly discuss the adopted plan consistency. I won't go through everything, but I will cover the most relevant parts. So we found that the subdivision text amendment is consistent with the twenty eighteen bicyc- So we found that the subdivision text amendment is consistent with the 2018 bicycle plan, which calls for the city to regularly update local street design standards to reflect national best practices and regularly update the city's traffic calming policies. Additionally, the text amendment is consistent with the 2023 walk hindo pedestrian plan because it supports decreasing the number of driveways onto existing streets. Next slide. We believe that the subdivision text revisions will help assist in the preservation of existing streets by deterring the creation of additional curb cuts for driveways along the street. We found it to be consistent with many of the Gen H comprehensive plan goals, including vibrant neighborhoods, authentic community character, safe streets and trails, reliable and accessible utility services and welcoming and inclusive communities. And we also found it to be consistent with the Gen H guiding principles of compact development, desirable and affordable housing and connectivity. Next slide. With regards to the changed conditions, public interest and public facilities, we feel the subdivision text amendment will decrease the number of driveways exiting onto existing streets, therefore benefiting public safety and public infrastructure. Next slide. Um, the planning board legislative committee met on August 20th. Three members plus staff were in attendance. There were several questions and comments made about the proposed subdivision text amendment that has since been addressed through our revisions. There was discussion of clarifying orientation of building entrances, but this was not included in the final draft. No motion was made, but the committee voiced support for the changes. And you can go to the next slide. Um, so we have a draft consistency statement. So we say the petition aligns with the city's adopted plans, policy guidance to promote vibrant neighborhoods, create compact developments, establish connectivity and improve walkability, bikeability through the community, throughout the community. Next slide. Um, and we have a draft rationale for approval and also a denial. You can go to the next slide, Lou. Next slide. And I can take questions.
Madam Chairman, I have another question. Lot to take in. I spent 13 months on comp, this comp plan, so, uh, and I'm still learning things. Could you give me an example of maybe what the parameters would be to reclassify a street?
Yes, so, um, we have talked with our public works department. We talked with them about this AADT classification. Um, and so what we would do is we could initiate them, if the street art doesn't already have that study done on it, then they can go out there, it takes about a week turnaround and they will do the counts. If it's above that 300 threshold, then, uh, the city manager would have the ability to reclassify it so that we could require that marginal access, uh, street. And I'll, I'll just say the reason for all of that is to avoid having a bunch of those driveways out onto this street. And so, you know, creating that marginal access street would take it off of the existing street and put it right.
One more question, Madam Chairman. Uh, curbs, no curbs, if it doesn't have a curb, is it one classification if it has a curb, no matter what the traffic count would be?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah.
But a lot of our roads don't have curbs.
So most of our new developments, uh, some residential wouldn't if there's a sidewalk on the opposite street, but most would require the construction of sidewalks along any public street that didn't already have it. And so there's a possibility that that would not happen, but, um, it's somewhat, somewhat limited. And, uh, I, I think even beyond that, we may have situations where even if the sidewalk were not required, you would still want to avoid the driveway points of access. You would want to limit those.
First parameter would be a, uh, car count.
Right, right, right.
Doesn't meet that, then we go back to the drawing board.
Well, we, we just wouldn't be requiring the marginal access street in that situation.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you, okay, so if there aren't any more questions for staff, do we have, um, the applicant? Would you like to discuss your?
Afternoon, I'm Zach Grogan, uh, I'm the applicant, um, certainly. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, Five Jersey Road, Greenville, South Carolina. By and large, totally support this, um, I, uh, I, I think I'm, I'm happy that Matt and Lou got the, uh, got their urban residential and urban village, uh, presentation in before this, just to kind of have it in your mind when you're thinking about this. Um, I think it's, I think it's important. Uh, and my question, really probably more to staff than to planning board, if that's okay. The, my proposed text amendment was about maybe a sentence, maybe two, right? Um, and, and really just allowed for the double frontage, um, and to get away from, uh, the required buffering, right? The buffering stayed. And we've kind of allowed staff to reclassify streets with this text amendment. So I, I kind of want to understand how we got from that to this. Um, and the reason that I'm bringing up the buffering, uh, certainly, uh, I'll be here again very shortly. Um, but with the urban residential, the urban village, there are, uh, portions of that zoning classification that allow you to, um, create your own setbacks, right, off of, off of the right of way and/or off of the edge of pavement. So it helps if, you know, the edge of the pavement and the right of way is not always the same place. Oftentimes it's, it can be very far apart, right? Um, so it, it helps bring the development forward, towards the road, uh, where urban village, urban residential encourages the development to address the street. Um, and you're, you've been involved in that comp plan for, for a long time, a long time, probably really familiar with all of it. A lot of the development that's rendered in that comp plan has development immediately adjacent to roads and sidewalks. So bring it, i.e. bringing the development all the way up to the street for a more urban feel, right? The buffering kind of prevents that. So anyway, that's, that's my question primarily to staff, uh, and that's the reason for the question.
Talk, I'll start, if you, if that's all right. Um, I, the one thing I'd point out to the board is that double frontage lots were actually on our, uh, zoning text amendment list that we adopted probably a year or so ago. Some of y'all may not have been on the board at the time, but we had, you know, run into certain types of issues with our zoning code. We'd identified a list of zoning text amendments that as staff had the opportunity to work through them, they would do so. So in this particular case, we had some things related to double frontage lots that we already had in mind that we wanted to, to address. So there, to, to partially answer your question, I'm going to hand it over to Matt. But to partially answer your question, there was a conversation already going on, uh, with staff around double frontage lots because we'd run into other situations where, um, we, we really needed to be allowed to use them and, uh, had not been able to for the subdivision ordinance, so, um, do you want to maybe answer or take a stab at?
Yeah, so the way that the subdivision ordinance is written related to double frontage lots, it allows them, but only in certain circumstances. And so the proposal was just to allow them and we didn't want to carte blanche, just allow them. We wanted to allow them in certain circumstances and give flexibility to developers, but also give some flexibility to, to staff, um, by way of the city manager to, um, require a marginal access street where the, where the development would otherwise result in a series of driveway curb cuts or conflict points, whether there's a curb or not, um, along a roadway, um, when there would be a better opportunity to bring some type of access along the rear of the property and bring the access from the rear and not have all those conflict points. And that desire, which, which, and what that does is it greatly improves walkability, provides opportunities for shifting the buildings up as, uh, Zach described, creating a more, uh, walkable, walkable urban form. But even if we expanded it from not just, you know, it was expressways and boulevards is where you are currently permitted to have double frontage. If we extended that to thoroughfares, that only grabs a couple more streets in the city. There are a lot more places throughout the city where that desired outcome would be preferred over a, a series of driveway curb cuts. So we wanted to expand it as much as possible. We had to find a quantifiable way to say, under these circumstances, we can do this. So we, we've been chasing this thing around quite a bit to try to kind of narrow it down into something. It, it, you basically opened this Pandora's box, uh, that we've been kind of working through, um. It's in terms of the, the buffering, uh, we have reduced it from 25 feet to 12 and a half feet on local streets, 12 and a half feet from the edge of pavement. So even u- under urban residential or CMU, those zoning districts still require some front setback, but it's measured either from the back of the curb or from the existing pavement. And it's generally 12 and a half feet to 14 feet. And so that pedestrian realm is going to be from the edge of the pavement to the building edge and it's going to measure out somewhere in that 12 and a half, 12 and a half foot range. So we feel that we're not overextending a buffer that would overly push buildings back, but also reserve some space if that road needs to be improved, uh, at some point. If there aren't sidewalks, we could add sidewalks. If there's no bike lane, we could have a little space for a bike lane, whatever it may be. Um, it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty favorable, uh, especially opposed to, as compared to the 25 foot buffer that's required on other larger streets like boulevards where you, you really may have a, a lane expansion at some point.
12 and a half feet, really, maybe 15 feet, I'm not trying to change my anything, just.
Yeah, we, we did not want to negatively impact good urban development, um, so we kept it pretty small. Yeah, but I think it does not necessarily, it shouldn't negatively impact in, yeah, some of your proposals.
Yeah, I want to try and keep that very separate.
Sure.
The, uh, you know, and when you, when you propose something like this, there are a ton of downstream effects, right? That we probably don't even know about yet.
Right.
Really, uh, and so, and, and I appreciate working with staff. Um, we, I've, I've enjoyed it, maybe they haven't so much, but, uh, I had a draft of what ended up here, so I, it could have been that I misinterpreted the buffer. I felt like, um, yeah, yeah, 25 or 12. Yeah, local streets, yeah, so I mean, we're still looking at the, the 25 foot buffer for expressway, boulevards and thoroughfares, um, which, to your point, that's where, that's where the urban design is going to be located, right? It is, it's on those three designated streets. And he, in that presentation, he talked about the, uh, where, where the urban residential, urban village was going to be allowed is only in a few places and probably going to be on those three types of streets, right? So, and it could be, it could be just my interpretation.
Yeah, but this is only for double, when you're creating double frontage, you have to have that buffer.
Right.
So if you're just doing, I don't know, multifamily apartment along Spartanburg Highway, that's not going to apply.
Okay.
Um, it's when you're doing subdivision and creating double frontage is when it would apply.
Got, okay, so not, I guess it's not any development that's forward to the street.
Not any development that's forward to the street, only subdivision.
That's, that's where, all right, now, now I'm following.
Yeah. And one thing to clarify, do you have, do you have the motion at the end of your slide?
It should be.
I just want to check something, um.
Is it okay if Kyle goes ahead, she has another question for him? Yes, not.
I think I'm all set, so.
What is the difference between a right of way and a buffer?
Um, so the, the non-access buffer is, so it can include that right of way. Um, but it is, and we were actually just talking about this. It's really designed to not allow for driveways out onto that street. So you wouldn't be able to access the lot because of this non-access buffer. And then as Matt mentioned, if the DOT needed to expand that road at all, um, they would have that non-access buffer to expand into in, in later years.
Peter brought up a point about sidewalks, 12 and a half feet for a sidewalk for water, sewage, utilities. 12 and a half feet is not a very lo- big buffer to, to cram everything that you might need to put in there. So that's 12 and a half feet isn't very wide.
Oh, miniaturization.
Sewer pipe's smaller, right?
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this point, we're open the public hearing. So would you like to speak, Miss Williams?
Good afternoon, then, Williams, Chadwick Avenue. Honestly, it's very confusing for me what this is even saying. But when I see this gentleman here, I think of the development, um, on old Spartanburg Highway in Brooklyn, and I'm trying to figure out how that plays out in this and if it's even relevant. Um, I don't know if we're able to ask questions like in a neighborhood compatibility meeting or if you just have to comment.
This is a public hearing for.
Okay.
This is a public hearing for the planning board.
Questions really, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so my concern is just how does that play out? Because when you look over on Brooklyn Avenue there, you know, the neighbors were concerned about how these units, all of these packed units right there, the trees are all going to be gone and it's literally going to be right across the street from them. And then they said, well, are you going to put a buffer in? Yes, we're going to put a buffer. So is this cutting into that buffer? And, um, you know, was Brooklyn a thoroughfare or was it a, a local street?
So Lynn, I do understand these, the nature of your questions. Um, the Brooklyn project itself will come before board at some point and these questions would be relevant at that point. In terms of our being able to interpret and provide that feedback, at this point, we would not be able to do that. And this would just be related to the subdivision text.
Right, and so as the public, I'm saying, okay, here's the only way I can relate it. And that is by what do we have coming in the pipeline and how will affect those neighbors? So thank you for that. Um, so that's how I'm relating to this when I consider it is, okay, well, in the applicability of it, if it plays out on that street and it cuts away that buffer, you know, they were already saying that's not enough buffer and that's going to be too dense for that street. So I mean, this is kind of pushing that forward and going to allow it to happen more, but that's not what the neighbors were wanting. So, um, I guess I'm just voicing that because that's just one example of how this could potentially play out. That's, and I think your point about the buffer is important. And actually the physical vegetative buffer needs to be there too. Especially on the local streets because that's where they're most affected because it's smaller. Thank you.
Well, it seems like just the overall, just as a comment, that the overall, um, quality of a higher density residential development would improve by having this text amendment. But are there any other people that would like to speak from the public? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and open it for board discussion? Anything?
Good idea, move forward.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Very quickly, uh, we caught, um, uh, an error in the cover sheet motion that you have. Very quickly, uh, we caught, um, uh, an error in the cover sheet motion that you have in front of you. So we have, uh, uh, one we've put together on the screen. If anyone can see the screen and wants to take a shot at that.
Okay.
You okay, Peter?
Yeah.
It just, the references to the specific sections in the subdivision ordinance are, have been altered.
That's only the opening paragraph? I move the planning board recommend city council adopt, go back where you had it. Planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the official city of Hendersonville subdivision ordinance by revising, if you mind, by revising section 3.03, comma, 3.04 and 4.03 as presented by staff based on the following, number one, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan, uh, 2018 bicycle plan and 2023 walk handle pedestrian plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing. And because the petition aligns with the city's adopted plans, policy guidance to promote vibrant neighborhoods, create compact development, establish connectivity and improve walkability, bikeability throughout the community. Anything else? Okay. Continue.
Yes, and it, and the rest is on your sheet, if you'd rather read it off.
No, I took it, I got it down. Number one, the proposed text amendment creates flexibility for property owners while still limiting potential impacts to the greater community, which includes congestion management, thank you, through driveway consolidation, reduction of conflict points, point, conflict point for pedestrian cyclists and vehicles. Number two, proposed text amendment expands the number of streets that will allow double frontage lots while also imposing more requirements to ensure that these lots do not negatively impact the community. And number three, the proposed text amendment will assist in redeveloping smaller lots in areas targeted for infill. Anything more?
Right. So do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so motion passes.
Adam, chair.
Andrew, present.
We, we missed the second on that one. Who seconded that?
I did.
Uh, thank you.
Bearcat Loop. Okay, now to the controversial item for this evening. We have standard rezoning at Sixth Avenue and Bearcat Loop, which is currently zoned MIC, CZD. Is proposed to be rezoned to MIC. It is point zero five acres. It is, uh, future land use designation of institutional, next slide. There's some, uh, it's a vacant lot, small lot right at that corner there near Hendersonville Middle. Next slide. So, uh, just for some context here, this, this map kind of helps, but this is a remnant of, uh, of a parcel that was connected to the, uh, Grace Church at the corner of Blythe and 64. When they did a daycare expansion and, and, and enhanced a parking area, it triggered a, um, uh, special use permit. And so that special use permit extended on that whole parcel. When the city came along to, uh, construct Bearcat Loop to improve traffic circulation for the school, they acquired, uh, some land to be able to do that. And in the process did a land swap where this remnant of land that used to be connected to the church, uh, was then swapped with the app, uh, with, uh, Mr. Blatt. And the zoning district stayed the same. So, um, despite, uh, this new right of way being cut through there and, and ownership changing hands, uh, this zoning district stayed the same. And so it's, it's a remnant of, uh, MIC, uh, which what we call CZD now, used to be, uh, special use. Uh, that's remained and we are essentially cleaning that up and, uh, taking it to a base zoning back to MIC to, um, to fit with the rest. On the screen is the, uh, future land use map. And, um, so we, uh, we go through the process of, uh, considering uh, the comprehensive plan and consistency with that. Uh, the, uh, plan designates this as institutional in the future land use and conservation map. The surrounding properties are also institutional with the accession of the cemetery, which is open space recreation. Um, next slide. Uh, while additional analysis is provided in the staff report, in short, the subject property is, uh, the remnant that I described. Land uses in the area are variety of commercial, institutional and residential with properties running on Sixth Avenue primarily consisting of commercial and institutional. Permitted uses with, within the MIC zoning district, uh, in addition to, uh, existing areas known for medical, institutional and cultural and the immediate area suggests this would be, uh, this would provide for compatible future development at this location. And to keep things short, uh, we just have our, uh, staff analysis on the next slide. Uh, we find it consistent with the comprehensive plan, it is compatible. There are changed conditions that happened with the road that, uh, require this change. Uh, there's no, uh, negative impact on, uh, the public or public facilities or a negative impact on the natural environment. And so with that, we have a draft comprehensive plan consistency statement and some rationale for your approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Go ahead.
Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue, thank you for your time. This is really to take the time to implore to Mr. Blatt, I liked your idea of the pet cemetery. And I really hope that can move forward because my family is buried across the street there. My grandparents, my great grandparents and my great great grandparents. So when you sit there, it's, it's very peaceful in that forested lot there. I'm just really concerned. And somehow if you could gift that to the city or let them pay you for it and extend Oakdale or put the pet cemetery, I implore you, because when you say it's perfect for infill development, it just turns my stomach. And so I just implore you to please consider, you know, extending the Black Cemetery or, um, you know, it's a nationally historic registered landmark. And, um, I think that the, the trees around it there are really important to that essence. So I just, I beg you to not develop that lot, sir, and work with the community to try to preserve it and maybe your vision of what you spoke about. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Okay, if there's no other speakers, then we'll close the public hearing and open for a board discussion.
Pet cemetery? Need idea crossing the regular cemetery. It's not very big.
Yeah, adjacent.
Not very big.
Yep.
Access parking, all that good fun things.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, um, for recommendation of approval. I move the planning board recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, pin 9568 dash 39 dash 3793 from medical, institutional and cultural dash conditional zoning district to medical comma institutional comma and cultural zoning district based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville's Gen H comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and because the proposed zoning district, medical, institutional and cultural MIC aligns with the Gen H 2045 comprehensive plan, future land use and conservation map and the character area description for institutional. Two, furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing. And because one, the zoning standards for the parcel do not change with the removal of the conditional zoning district designation. Two, the permitted uses and development standards of the MIC zoning aligns with the existing character of the Sixth Avenue corridor. Three, the rezoning allows for a diminutive vacant parcel to be used in combination with surrounding MIC parcels in a productive fashion.
Thank you. Then Peter, you're second. Okay. Everyone in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, that's all. Do we have any other?
Yeah, just want to jump in on other business. Um, so the, uh, next planning board meeting is, is lining up to be a doozy. Um, and want to, uh, go ahead and see, uh, what, uh, the board members think of potentially planning for a second meeting. We're going to have possibly, uh, at this point, uh, we have applications for the Echo Hotel CZD, which is the hotel at the back side of the Blue Ridge Mall. Um, we have 715 Greenville Highway, which is there adjacent to Publix. We have the Brooklyn Townhomes Project, and then we also have an administrative review of the Berkeley Park soccer fields. So each of those first three are probably going to have a significant number of public members in attendance. And so just moving through the public hearing may take you quite a bit of time. And I know from my perspective, having been in here past eight o'clock before, I certainly don't make good decisions after being in a meeting for four hours. So, um, just wanted to put you all kind of on notice and take your temperature on whether, um, you would desire to split that meeting up, um, and.
Weeks?
Well, so what we, we, I, I'll take board suggestions. I mean, we could do it anywhere from just having everything, uh, splitting it into on a Wednesday and Thursday that week to, uh, doing something more, um, spread out. The, the, the one limitation, so the limitations for staff are preparing staff reports. So we, we can't get too far in front of our regular meeting. And then, um, I typically meet with council following planning board to review your all's review with them, uh, in one-on-one session. So, um, don't want to be too, too close to council itself, which typically we've got about three weeks between those two meetings. So less worried about that timeline, but, uh, yeah.
Well, same, same week.
Well, so is the soccer field not in a three?
It's, it's an administrative, it won't be CZD, but it, uh, so you, that's the process. If you all recall, we typically don't have public hearings for those. Um, but because of the nature of the project, I thought that the board may still have a number of questions about it and.
We can just push that to the next month then.
Uh, so the challenge there is that the county really wants to get that one done because they, they have a.
Yeah, the recreation complex.
Yeah, and they're trying to, um, they're, they're trying to, uh, basically ha- have that funding committed by the end of the year. So they, they, they are on a really tight timeframe, so I, I wouldn't want to push them off.
Put it number one of the list.
Yeah, certainly we could, uh, we could do that one right off the bat. Yeah. Yeah. That one will be, um, and, and the other two have both had, uh, good attendance at, at the NCM. So I, I think, you know, you're going to have, uh, a pretty significant public contingent in that would like to, to.
Just an observation, the, the last time that we were here until after seven o'clock, people weren't being cut off after two minutes.
So.
Ran us really late. We need to be very cognitively that two minutes.
Staff will provide the egg timer, but it, it is up to the board really to, to, to enforce that, yeah. Um, but yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I think establishing those sort of parameters at the beginning of the meeting is important for everybody's benefit.
The last time that hotel came up, people were talking a half an hour.
Well, if we limit the time people talk, do you think it's conceivable that we could actually do this in one?
What, what we could do, um, I, I need to double check what, uh, how long do we have? When we have to notice a special call, how, how much time ahead of a special call do we have to notice it? Yeah, so I think probably what we would want to do is maybe with the board have like a backup date so that if during the meeting you all decide we're gonna, you know, pull the ripcord on this, but we will reconvene next week at such and such time and date uh, to finish the project or to finish what's on your agenda. With, yeah, that, that would certainly be an option if that works for the board members. That's okay though. There's never going to be a week where everything's okay. Do you really? Oh, okay.
Seventeenth.
Recession comeback on the seventeenth.
Or less, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't. Just throwing it up.
If you guys can do it.
Robertson be here, Jim be here?
He's a globe driver. So one thing that staff could do, we could, uh, suggest some dates for that second. We can poll the rest of the board if that's the preference. I was kind of looking for some general direction and. All right, um, and we can, uh, hold the board on what's optimal. I think we'd, optimally, we would keep it at the four o'clock timeframe just to be consistent with the community on that front. But. Yeah.
And, and, and I, I don't know about you guys, but I go to church at six o'clock on Wednesday nights, so.
Well, that's a good like drop dead time. I think Wednesday might be perfect then. Two hour meeting and Donna's ready to go. Let's, let's get out of here. I, I appreciate it. I think that's enough direction for staff. We'll, we'll follow up with y'all.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.